Yes.
Okay, we're going to call to order the December 2025 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. If we can start with roll call, please.
All right. Mr. Goulas.
Here.
Mr. Sims.
Here.
Mr. Stamps.
Here.
Mr. Underwood.
Here.
Mr. Rospento.
Here.
Mr. Harwell.
Here.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Here.
Mr. Henninger.
Here.
And Mr. Roberts.
Here. Thank you. We are going to skip past, I think, the meeting minutes from our last meeting. We'll be ready before our next meeting, so no meetings to, minutes to vote on tonight. Communications from the Chair and the Vice Chairman, Mr. Henninger.
I don't, thank you.
Okay. The only thing I have is that those of you who attend all of our meetings, and we have a big group of you, I'm sure, here every month, probably noticed a little bit of a different composition to our commission. We've had three new members replacing three people who have rolled off. We'll start with Jared Stamps, who is our, the Battalion Chief and Fire Marshal. He's replacing Brandon Broadhead, who has rolled off. And also, we have Jeff Underwood, who is replacing Winslow Armstead, who is now on City Council. And we also have Nick Sims, who is replacing Mayor Andrus as the Council Liaison Member to the Planning Commission. So, like to welcome all three of you. Most of you are probably familiar, Mr. Underwood, he's been involved in Homewood leadership for a long time, including being a past President of the City Council. So, we have some very qualified, maybe overqualified people joining us. So, we're happy to have them. We'd also like to thank Mayor Andrus, Mr. Broadhead, and Mr. Armstead for their service the last several years. They were all very involved and excellent members of this commission. We'll definitely miss them. So, that's all I have as far as communications, so we can just move to new business. The first case is Case AD-25-12-01. This is a, I'm sorry, an amended development plan at 400 University Park. The applicant is Brookdale Senior Living Facility. And Mark Hardwick is the owner. If whoever's presenting could come forward and present your case, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Matt Sims. I am with Shoal Engineering. We are the civil engineer on this project, speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, tell us, tell us about what you're asking us as far as the changes in the amended development plan.
Yeah. The essential reason is the client has asked to develop a pickleball court in a portion of their parking lot to be utilized for their residence, both for recreational and therapeutic reasons. And the way that the regulations are written for the city of Homewood, that this would then trigger an amended development plan.
Thank you. No, understood. Well, this is a public hearing. If anyone here wants to speak on this case, this would be your opportunity. And, and Mr., I'm sorry, did you say Mr. Sims? Sims, okay. Did you, if you wrote your name down, then you can...
I can do that.
Yeah, if you would do that, and just kind of as a marching forward matter, if you come forward to speak, if you would just, in addition to stating your name for the record, write it down along with your address on the, on the pad, so. All right. Again, this is a public meeting. If anyone from the public wants to speak on this case, this is your opportunity. And seeing no one, we'll close the public portion and open up to any questions. Mr. Sims, you can, you can just come back up.
Okay.
And just, just to be clear on this, the pickleball court, where it's located, is on the opposite side of the property, away from the creek, by next to Lake Shore there.
That's correct, yeah. This is going to be near the back part of the property, up against a fairly large retaining wall, so not visible really to anybody unless you are driving into the property itself.
Can I understand no illumination? This is just a daytime?
That's correct. It's just a daytime use.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
You made the motion, who seconded it? All right. All right. Mr. Goulas.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Henninger.
Yes.
Mr. Underwood. Mr. Rospento.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Yes.
Mr. Stamps.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so that amended development plan is going to go forward with an I-0 recommendation to City Council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, our next two cases are related. The case is RS-251202, a resurvey request with respect to 813 Green Springs Highway, and then an amended development plan for the same address, Case AD-251203. The applicant is Homewood Community Church. If whoever's here to present on this case can come forward down. Again, just state your name, name and address with record as well.
Brian Hatcher with Codra Engineering, 2447 Alton Road, Irondale. I've also got...
Yeah, Mike O'Kelly with O'Kelly Architecture, 200 Olmsted Street.
Good evening, I'm Tom Franklin. I'm the pastor of Homewood Community Church.
While Tom fills out his information, I'll kind of go ahead and introduce what we're looking at. Case two and three tonight are related. Currently, Shinara owns the two properties shown in this exhibit. Homewood Community Church is looking to subdivide and purchase the rear lot, the lot in orange on this property, to combine with their property to the south of this, that's currently located behind the Edge, for the development of a new church facility for them. I'm going to let Tom kind of tell you a little bit about HCC that you may not be aware of, just so you kind of know who they are as a entity, and then I'll kind of get back in and talk about some specific technical items.
Thanks. Good evening again, I'm Tom. I'm the pastor. Our church has been meeting for seven years. About 10 years ago, I had a dream, I've lived in Homewood for about 20 years now, so just want to say thanks for what you do for our city. The dream here is to be a, it's an old concept of being a parish church, which just simply means we're in a community and for a community. And so, our mission statement is really simple. It's that we would be a group of people that love God, love their neighbor, and love their place. So, I hope, if you haven't heard of us, that you, if you have, you would say that we've already been a blessing to our community. That's our goal. And so, when we saw this property as a potential place to have a permanent home, we thought it was perfect for a couple of reasons, but mostly because it's, feels like it's a part of the community. It's a place where a lot of our members will most likely be able to walk to church. It's very close to where I live as well, but maybe more importantly, it's just a place where we think all of Homewood could consider it to feel like home. So, that's our goal as a church. Again, we're seven years in. We hope that we can be a church that has a faithful presence in Homewood for a long, long time, but it's been a joy so far, so feel free to ask me anything that you might want.
So, the resurvey portion of this project, which would be the case number two for the night, would take the green parcel shown on the screen and separate it from the dark red parcel as the first step. The reason it's the first step is for them to purchase the parcel, it has to be separated from the overall master parcel from Shinara. Pending approval, hopefully tonight, on the resurvey and the amended development plan, they will come back in the future and resurvey the green lot and the light red lot together, so they have one contiguous parcel that their parking and building are in. This, this parcel and this development will access from the north, from Carr Avenue, and from the west, from Green Springs Highway. There is, I don't know if you want to click forward to the development plan, or how you want to, or how we want to do it. I know there are two cases, but they're so tight, it's hard to explain. That'll work. So, the, it has a northern access off of Carr Avenue, and a western access off of Green Springs Highway. There is no planned access on Columbiana Road that is on purpose. So, the site has two current easements to get to it. There's an easement that goes through the Edge parking lot to the, to the site itself that was put in place when the Edge was designed and constructed. There's also an ingress, egress easement from Carr Avenue through the Shinara parcel to their new parcel, that is in place for when they close on the property that they're purchasing, which would then allow them to combine the two parcels and get their parking solely on their parcel, which would provide 206 overall parking spaces, 175 are required for their development and their church. They do have a cross-parking agreement with the Edge that they will pull 41 spaces from. The Edge has 82 spaces in total, per the Homewood zoning code. They can pull 50% and end it with, under a shared access, or shared parking agreement. So, the 41 from the Edge and the ones that would be on their site, get them to 206 total parking spots for 175 required. When we do subdivide from the Shinara parking, Shinara parcel, the northern half, Shinara still has the correct parking count for their proposed, for their existing buildings on site. They do not need a cross, cross-parking agreement with us, nor us with them. Based on the sizes of their existing buildings and the parking count they have remaining, they fulfill the code requirement. Kind of going forward from there, you'll notice in the, the green hatch on the screen against Columbiana Road is an undisturbed buffer that is currently in place, and we are leaving in place. The blue hatch is the building setback, which is a 60-foot setback from the right-of-way on Columbiana Road. And then, basically, we are planning to park, there's an existing culvert that runs from Green Springs Highway, bisecting the northern and southern parcels, and goes under a bridge under Columbiana Road. We are proposing, under our parking lot, to culvert that, that bridge, or that ditch, and it will be designed per city code, Hundred Year Storm, and will handle the loading of the fire department requirements for their trucks, which I believe are 85,000 pounds. So, the goal is to park, have one continuous parking lot across that, that culvert, and then we'll work, work through that with city staff, on any maintenance agreements we need to take control of, or take out of the city maintenance side of it. The development plan, we have some building elevations as well. What you're looking at now is the proposed park, or the proposed landscape plan, which meets the landscape ordinance for the city and the tree ordinance. These are the building elevations, if Michael wants to kind of tell you what you're looking at.
Yeah, so normally, we wouldn't do this level of detail this early in the process, in what's kind of master planning, site planning, but obviously, your requirements dictated, we turn in some elevations. So, these are done by hand, but the idea being that we want it to look like a church, you know, hence the gable roof on the sanctuary side of it, and the two-story wing, the education wing, you know, there's already some, you know, kind of flat-roofed masonry buildings nearby. We want to play off of that, and it allows us opportunity to have parapets to hide some rooftop equipment, obviously. Materials, you know, 90-ish percent, we're looking at like brick with precast accents, something traditional in design. Don't really get a sense for the detailing on a drawing like this, but you know, we're hoping to find some brick that's, you know, a little bit more antique-looking, have some corbling at the gable ends, either through bricks or through precast corbels, some canopies to provide some sun, sun, sun shade and rain cover, primarily off the big main lobby we've got. The way the building is positioned, it will have an entrance on the east side, facing Columbiana, for anybody that wants to walk to church, even though there's no vehicular access over there. And then, the primary entrance will really be on the, the west and the north. We've got a really long, linear, kind of 22 or so foot deep by, maybe 100-foot-long lobby space, with doors opening up to the north to, like a little plaza, kind of an outdoor common space, and the doors opening up to the west to face the Edge parking lot.
I guess one thing to note on this would be, the right portion on your, if you're looking at the bottom view, on the east elevation, the right portion of the building you're looking at is the education wing, which is two stories. The left portion that has the gable roof is the sanctuary portion, which is only a one-story section with, and I, we went with a max height of 45 feet.
Forty-five.
Per the development plan. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
We probably will, but before we get to that, we're going to open this up for the public. Again, this is a public hearing. If anybody wants to come forward and speak on this case, this is your opportunity.
Scott Hilton, I'm a, live in the adjacent neighborhood.
I'm sorry, would you repeat your name?
I didn't hear. Sorry, my name is Scott Hilton, I live in the adjacent neighborhood off of Hanbar Terrace. I just had questions about this project. It could have been answered easier than getting the notice on Thanksgiving evening. So, my concerns on this project are, are similar to what was proposed when the Edge passed, about noise and sound, some things that weren't properly addressed during that project. Specifically on this one, the corner of Columbiana and Carr Avenue, the easement, if we're leaving 30 feet alone with the trees, mature trees that are there, that's important to the, the neighborhood, to keep noise down. And other concerns with drainage, whether the, especially with the change of the, of the parking lot, was that going to affect any drainage into the adjacent neighborhoods? Those are my major concerns with this project, you know, once completed, but during the construction phase, how are vehicles going to enter the construction site? Is Columbiana going to be shut down? Is Carr Avenue going to be overloaded more than it is now? Currently, with, with Publix not having access with the light, everyone cuts through by the fire department, and that, that's, it's not a three-way style, it's nothing there, you just have to wait forever. I've gotten stuck in that parking lot for 20 minutes, trying to get out of Publix. So, just be aware, that's a concern. I don't know how y'all handle that as far as notices, or if y'all can work with the city to improve traffic in the area, but that would be an important step, I think. So, you know, addition of, of 200 parking spots, that's assuming 200 vehicles are going to want to leave there after church. Again, no turn lanes on either one of those roads, so access in and out of the neighborhood is going to be blocked in certain times of the day. Please address those before this project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Jessica Sparks. I live at 815 Columbiana Road, which you could see was directly behind the Edge on the larger planning document that was up on the screen a few minutes ago. One of the things I have heard from our neighbors who live in those homes on Columbiana is concern about construction traffic, and I know that the overall plan doesn't show an entrance to and from the church on Columbiana directly, but we received a letter, Homewood Community Church came down our street probably two or three weeks ago, and gave everyone, we received one, our neighbors received one, a letter saying that while they were hoping to avoid construction traffic on Columbiana, they were concerned that it might be a requirement of the Planning Commission to have that access on our street. And I think it's important to note, I've lived on our street for almost nine years, and people go 300 miles an hour down that street. It is a big cut-through to get off of Green Springs, to get to Edgewood, to get to Publix, and people fly. And Nick, as our city council person, I know you've heard our concerns about that in the past, because it's a pretty dangerous thing. So, that's something to consider, and also, if people are going to be walking there, there's only one crosswalk to get to the Edge, and if we're talking 200 cars of people, plus people walking from their neighborhood, I think that's, you know, additional crosswalks or something might need to be discussed. I am concerned that that is a safety issue with people, you know, lots of folks walking on a street that has one crosswalk and sidewalks only down one side of the street. But, construction traffic tearing up our street is also a concern that we are, you know, noticing, and just don't want anything to be, you know, destroyed or damaged because of that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nigga Jabares. I live on Acton Avenue. I have lived there since 1965. I don't know if the people really investigate the area, but Green Springs is the worst place to have a church. It's not safe. People do not know what goes up and down that street at night. So, there's also places they can get. There's a church in Columbiana. It's a Methodist church, and I don't think they have many people attending there as they used to, because most of them come into the one on Oxmo Road. So, there's also another church. There's another church on Raleigh Avenue. That was up for sale. That was a nice church, they have the, the stuff. I don't, I don't know if they got sold or not, but there's so much other areas the church can look for. There's a lot of property to be bought on Lake Shore, and I think, in my opinion, this would be a big mistake to build a church right on Green Springs Highway.
Thank you.
Did you sign your name? If you would, please. Thank you. Right. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julia Kehono. I'm with, I'm at 811 Columbiana Road. I'm, I am the very large house next to me, probably the most directly and immediately impacted by it. And fortunately, Nick has, has been a real advocate for us in terms of meeting with the, both the, the Edge's management, and we've been in touch also with the, the church folks. But, my, my primary concern, aside from access, and there is, so there was some note in there that access is not contemplated at this time, the, the owner of the house next to me at 809, and some of the more vocal advocates, the one of those organizers on Columbiana Road, we have a large text group, they asked me, they were unable to come, one out of the country, other, the other unable to come because of children, that they made a point to emphasize that the access, the fact that there seemed that qualification and out, that, that is a huge, huge deal for us, and we've also received what we believe are commitments from, from the church, and from, from others, from the Edge, and from, from those we've had contact with here on the council, not to have it. So, I'm concerned that there, that seemed to be something that was considered a possibility. That's a big, big deal to us, for many, many reasons, the traffic that the other gentleman mentioned, for one thing. Because I'm most immediately impacted, I'd say two, the fact that we have, the, we had talked at one point about the divider space, there are trees that do not reach, that at this point, now we hope, and I'm gratified to hear a lot of the desire to be a good neighbor, and he has been very polite and, and kindness in his interactions with us, but we don't see the, the divider that we had been, that had been committed to us. The, the, the owner of the house next to me, the giant one, who's most immediately impacted, who has the crosswalk in front of him, also made a point from overseas to tell me tonight, to make, to repeat that that is a big deal. There is no, primarily, not just the noise that the others, even much more distantly, are impacted by, were immediately in front of it, but light, the light pollution. I have, as it stands now, that's why this, this talk about the, the parking spaces, I have what is, what I imagine like a series of headlights in front of me now, with absolutely nothing to cover it. It's night and day, there were trees there before those. I've been there just over 20 years, and what had been very much a green space, I can't, I, I understand that, that that it would, there was an impact, but we had, there had been more of a commitment for, for dividing. The light is, is blinding. The noise also, I imagine it could be that the, the church helps reduce the noise pollution, but in particular, those most immediately impacted right in front of us, it is, like I said, blinding. So, let's see, noise. The drainage, I think they had addressed, and the Homewood Community Church indicated that, but the code requires that it be improved, I'm glad to hear that. What the lady mentioned about the, the traffic, it is, like she says, I'm here to support that also. Scary, I have become one of those people who, who leaps out and raises my fist, because I'm thinking, a child is going to get run over in this, as it is now, with, perhaps this would slow them down, I don't know. But, so my primary concerns are no access, reiterate that, and more of a divide, a divider. As it stands now, it's almost intolerable. I don't know what additional traffic will do, but again, I'm heartened that those members of the Homewood Community Church appear to be very interested in helping us resolve this, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something that I think will ease some people's minds, and just share some information that might, and it might cut down on some of the comments that I feel sure are going to have to do with this? Is that okay with you?
It's okay with me, yes.
Okay. There, there will be a 30-foot buffer on, on the back of the property, and a buffer is, is a specifically designed, defined thing in the zoning ordinance, that it requires a certain type of planting evergreens, for instance, instead of something that is deciduous and is going to, you know, half the year, not provide the privacy that you're looking for. Also, after the first year, for instance, the, the trees and things that are planted there have to reach a certain height, they have to be at six feet at the end of the first year. At the end of three years, the general guidelines are 80% opacity, so that, and at eight feet. So, the planting material that they put in this 30-foot area, this buffer area, is what you're, what you're referring to, is, is that, and right now, it looks bad, because you have to clean out a lot of the underbrush to, to put in, so from, it looks more naked than it used to, but it's not going to forever. The plan shows that there will be that 30-foot buffer, and then there will be a 60-foot setback from the property line to the back of the building. So, there's a considerable distance from the back of the building to, well, even before you get to Columbiana, it's the property line, not to Columbiana. So, does that help at all? Does that help you feel any better?
Well, a buffer is supposed to lessen the, the impact on, on us.
Yes. It, it's trees and evergreen trees and plants and shrubs and things that will, they basically work as a damper, you know, to help with the, the noise. Certainly, any kind of lighting that will be on site, which, and, and we will get a photometric for that. So we'll be able to see that it doesn't leave the property. But that's what landscaping buffers are for. To protect residential areas from non-residential areas. And I just wanted you to know that it was, it, it is on the plan to be there and it's something that we will look at closely when it's submitted.
Okay. But I'm, I'm not sure, now I imagine because it's a church, I'm not sure what sort of the evening activities there would be, but at the level, I don't know that you could understand how it is until you were there at night. If the headlights, you can imagine a row of headlights shining at you. At, because my house is lower, I mean, it is, the lights are, it is straight across. I don't think anyone here would find it anything but. It does not buffer at all two or three years of that. Now, that's what I wonder about too, is the parking is there and further down, but is there going to be anything to lessen the impact there? The tops of the trees do not touch it. It is a row of headlights, shining and what were trees, complete trees now are, it's, it's like a, it's, I don't know, I think that you could not know until you saw it. That it should, to me, it's shocking that that's allowed. And I don't, again, I don't know what sort of evening activities or what sort of parking situation there would be there, but I'd like you to contemplate, contemplate it as you review plans to see what kind of light pollution there would be. But you're talking about two or three years from now. Right now, the trees don't buffer at all.
At all, yeah.
And there are now, so as described originally, it was a wall that's far apart and do not block anything. And there were, there were, oddly enough, there were, there were small trees all on the edge. I called the, as I saw them being torn down, I happened to be working remotely that day and walked out, walked up to them and I said, would you please leave some of this? And these were just hedges enough. That was, that's when I noticed. The next day, they had an event at the edge which had a wall of cars pointed at me and all of a sudden it became that. And the, the day before. And you could see where they had, they, they were kind enough to leave. It was about a 10-foot wide hedge of bushes and that was enough to, but only you could see where I asked them to stop. And they were kind enough to, they responded, but they left only that tiny space. The house next to me, absolutely nothing. It's all gone. And I'm not sure what sort of, on that part of it, what to do between now and then. Because I, I, I thought about videotaping and put, but I think you would have to just drive by on your own. But it's when there are events there. That was a Sunday night.
Yeah.
I think an important point too, looking at the edges parking will actually be, the sanctuary will be blocking that.
Blocked by the church.
I was gonna say, maybe that it helps.
It's gonna be blocked by the church if you look at your pipeline.
What's your address?
I think, yes.
What was your, what was your addresses for your house?
What is your, what is your address?
I saw I and the very large house next to it are the ones immediately.
You're, you're gonna be directly behind the building.
Directly behind the church.
So it's gonna block all.
Yes. That's what I'm saying. In a way, I thought that could.
Yeah, it would usually be perfect.
Yeah.
In a, in about a year and a half.
I think the churches can block that lighting that you currently see from the edge. The building itself will block that.
Okay. And noise also?
From the edge?
No, if all this would be, I imagine from a, from the activities, from, from people driving in and out or walking to from right there. I don't know. Cause I'm not sure exactly what the law is.
I think once the public hearing portion is closed, I think the commission can ask that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And by the way, I would like to add about the edge, the management of the edge and the Homewood Community Church have been extremely polite and really kind in their dealings with us.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening. I see some familiar faces up there. My name is Greg Cobb. I live at 1310 Palmetto Street. So my property is not affected by this development. But I just wanted to share with you some things I know about the area. Right now. And that's water. Okay? Back when I first went to work for the city of Homewood, Captain D's was still there. And everything behind Captain D's towards Columbiana was wooded. It was scrubbed mostly. But we didn't have hardly any flooding problems. And the first time I got called out to one, it was 821 Acton. And the water was standing in that backyard. Wasn't very deep, about four inches deep, but the whole yard was just underwater. So that wasn't that bad because it wasn't affecting the houses. Well, once I went, went to clearing that wooded lot, started clearing towards Columbiana, they cleared about half of it in the beginning. And I guess this is when they started on the edge. And the water got higher and higher. And I don't know how many of y'all have walked out that drainage basin, but I've walked it all. And what that culvert does, it picks up water all the way from I-65. Okay? There's a pipe that goes, it comes in from behind to what used to be Mazers. It hooks into it. And there's another one that comes in off of Carr Avenue where Carr Avenue dead ends to the interstate. Comes in there and it goes to it. Then it goes down and it crosses Columbiana Road. It kind of snakes around in front of those, I don't know what those are, townhomes, whatever you want to call them. And then it goes underground. And it goes across the backyard of 816 Acton, turns and goes back due east across the side yard of 821 Acton. So, as it started to develop, and we're not there yet, I mean, this is when they started the edge development and clearance more of that lot. So last time I went over there, the water had been up to the floor joist of 816. And that house is sitting about three feet off the ground. You can see the high watermark right at the back door. So, you know, any vehicle that drove down that road would create wave action, just push it right into the house. It's picking up a lot more water than what people think it is. And I have seen it flood all the way across Broadway. When it flooded Acton and it's got, so what happens, that ditch, I didn't finish where I was going. That ditch goes underwater, yeah, underground, across 821. Then it turns and it goes underground to about the front yard of whatever the house is on Broadway. And it daylights. And then it flooded Broadway. There's a little box culvert under Broadway. It's not really a bridge, it's a box culvert. It's flooded Broadway and it goes on into Griffin Creek. But the, the problem I see is that there's, I don't know where you're getting relief from it. I mean, I know there's a detention pond on there, but I, Ms. Williams, who did the detention pond, do you know? Who did the?
It hasn't been designed yet.
Oh, okay. Well, I hope they get a good hydrologist on it because it's a, it's a very difficult problem. They're fighting uphill battle. I already know we got flooding over there. I've seen it. I've been there many times. And it's not gonna get any better. So that's my biggest concern is what it's gonna do to the floodwaters. Cause now you're taking what was woods, now it's dirt and partly wooded, and you turn it into hard surface. So that's, not only does it not absorb the water, but it makes it move that much faster. Cause water will come across the parking lot a whole lot faster than it is across rough ground. So I, I think that's the biggest hurdle we've got right there is how to handle that water. So if, if we have any heavy rains here in the near future, I would encourage y'all to take a little drive down Acton Avenue and see what you think. That's really all I want to share with you, that I have, I have been to those floods and I can only see it getting worse. It's not gonna get better. So.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much for your free time.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
How are y'all this evening? My name is Craig Boyett. I live at 8, at 100 Acton Avenue. Right at the corner of Carr and Acton. I'll sign in as Mr. Guest. Really, I guess I just want to reiterate the point about no construction traffic, no church traffic exiting onto Columbiana. You know, they'll just have to make do as far as construction. Carr and Greens Springs, that's no problem, but it's just, it'll be a nightmare if they flood Columbiana and Carr at the same time. Also, the three-way stop at Carr and Broadway is just a suggestion, not a rule. Very few people come to a complete stop at that three-way intersection. If we don't have police presence there at Carr and Columbiana, they're gonna do the same thing. Roll and stop, stuff like that. If you're walking, you take your life in your own hands. Another thing is we really, they say 200 parking spots. How many people are members of the church? Y'all know off the top of your head? So I guess the 200 to accommodate that many people in cars, I mean, there's not gonna be just one per car. But if they grow any, we'll have a lot more traffic. And then, next thing you know, we don't really want a parking deck built in our neighborhood. And we, we have one on Broad, excuse me, Oxmoor. And it's not very pretty building. And all but, they, how many times a night, a week do y'all meet? Like Sunday or Sunday and Wednesday? Sunday just in the morning or Sunday evening also?
Every Sunday morning and then maybe Sunday nights. That's, that's for eight to 10 in fall. Eight to 10 on the fall.
Okay, so like 20 nights, 20 Sunday nights. Well, that's, I would assume is acceptable too. We just want to make sure that everything is, somebody stays on top of it. And to talk about the buffer, you know, we were promised a really nice buffer behind Publix. And that didn't take just three years or whatever. It took till now to where it's finally a halfway decent buffer. They kind of just let it slip by the wayside. And so we got to stare at the back of a grocery store. And all, in our neighborhood. And I like Publix. I shop there. And there's no entrance onto Columbiana, but their buffer was a long time coming. So if they're gonna do a buffer, we need somebody to make sure that they get the buffer done and done correctly on that. And let me ask you one question. The front part of the shopping center is not gonna be affected, correct? Like Salvation Army, Chop Sueyian, Salvation Army. Okay, that'll all stay there. Okay. Would you, we just want to make sure, like I said, you stay, if you, if they have regulations to follow, stay on top of it. Cause, you know, we don't want to come home and one day and, well, there's a dirt road through the woods behind, you know, from the church where they're building out onto Columbiana because it was convenient. And with a four-way stop there, it's, it's hardly a stop right now. We don't need, you know, a couple hundred cars pouring out on the car and, you know, every other one's just running right through the stop sign. That's dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would there be no, no one further? Whoop, I spoke too soon.
Hello. My name is Richard Feis. My wife and I live at 817 Columbiana Road and just had a couple of concerns. One being Columbiana Road is a very unsafe road. The traffic's too heavy. People are cutting through, driving very fast and there are children that live on that road. And I would hate to see congestion increased, especially during the construction phase. If, if there's any, any leeway given to allow construction traffic to come from Columbiana into the building site, that's, that's just gonna be very, very unsafe. Not, not good for the road either. Another concern is the talk about buffer. And I understand you say that the church is gonna be between the edge and the, and Columbiana Road, but wasn't there supposed to be a buffer behind the edge? Because there's light, there's noise. We can live with a little bit of noise, but there's light at night. And it's just, just not a good situation for a residential neighborhood, especially in a city like Homewood that prides itself on its quality of life. I think those are two big concerns that need to be addressed. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public want to speak on this case? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public portion and call the applicant, Mr. Hatcher, Mr. Dell, if you want to come up and answer some questions from the commission. I guess if you want to, before we ask questions, if there are anything, if there are any questions or issues brought up by the public that you want to address off the top, that might short circuit some of our questions.
Definitely. Well, I'll try to address most, most of them if I can. And then if y'all have additional ones, we can do that. On, kind of going back a little bit, but on November 15th, it was mentioned by one of the neighbors, the church did go through the neighborhood, knocked on doors, handed out flyers to the neighbors that were home, put flyers in the mailboxes of the ones they could not get to. Kind of telling some, a lot of the things we talked about tonight, what they're planning on doing, make an introduction. That was where the construction traffic comment came from of we would try not to have construction traffic on Columbiana at all, at all. I think hearing the comments and discussing it back there, I think we can probably go ahead and say, we're not gonna have construction traffic on Columbiana and just, we'll move on with that topic. That will be, we will not have construction traffic on Columbiana, knowing the traffic concerns that are on that street as well already. The buffer, as Ms. Williams pointed out, adjacent to Columbiana, it is in our plans. We will be designed for the city, addressing the light pollution comment the lady had, lady had earlier. The church will block out the parking lot light from the edge for the most part. It's a two-story volume. It's a two-story volume. Headlights are not going to go through the church to the neighborhood. We will have to provide a photometric plan, like Ms. Williams said, earlier, to prove we're not having light pollution off of our site onto the neighborhood, to meet city standards. So it should solve a fairly large portion of her problems currently from headlights into her house, being where she is. Also, talking about the buffer, our playgrounds for the church are on that side adjacent to Columbiana. And while a buffer is being provided for the neighborhood, buffers are generally very good for playgrounds as well, because there are people that sadly enough like to look in playgrounds that children play. And so just as a safety thing, we tend to provide them anyway around playgrounds for children. Another question was the trees up on the corner of Carr and Columbiana. Those trees, at the current state of where we are on this project, are not anticipated being all taken down? That's, most of that's album power easement currently. They may be underbrushed, taken out, and replanted some, but for the most part, that will remain undisturbed up on the corner of Carr and Columbiana. As far as traffic goes, we submitted a traffic study to the city during this process that Skipper Consulting did. Skipper came back with no, based on the size of the building we're doing, the number of members, number of parking counts. There are no significant impacts to the neighboring streets and roadways around this development. They had one or two small items they would like to see improved, and one of them was the turning radius into the edge. It's kind of a sharp little curve coming into the edge. They wanted to widen that throat out a little bit. There's a left turn already on Greensprings Highway into this development. It's one of the few that are left, which provides the stacking it needs for off of Greensprings coming into this development as well. So we have run a traffic study. It has been provided to the city for their review. I'm sure Mrs. Zory has looked at it at this point. We talked about the service hours earlier. It's majorly Sunday mornings. There is no full-time daycare planned at this facility. They may have a Mother's Day Out program, which as we know, that's typically nine to 12, nine to one, a couple of days a week occasionally. But at this point in time, there is no full-time daycare planned for this church. Stormwater was the other large topic that Mr. Cobb brought up. And the majority of what he said, I would 100% agree with. There are water problems in the city of Homewood. We know where they are. We've all seen them. It's our job to engineer this site, design this site, to meet the city requirements, which are the 100-year storm going through this culvert, which is what the culvert will be designed at. It's our job to design the site to meet the city's stormwater requirements, to make sure we are not increasing post-development flows over what's there today. This site is 65% to 75% pavement already. Everything north of the ditch is already a parking lot. That's what we're putting back. The only impact is going to be the south side of the ditch between the edge and the buffer. That's really the main part of what's changing. That's where our underground detention is shown. It will have to be designed. It will have to take into account the backwater of the ditch. That ditch, the floodplain stops on the other side of Columbiana, as I mentioned to some of y'all earlier. We understand that's an engineering challenge, and I don't disagree with Mr. Cobb on that at all. However, if we meet pre-post leaving our site from everything that comes onto us and everything that goes through us, you know, we can only chase it so far. But when we leave the day we're finished, it will not be worse than the day we started. And that's per city code. We have to do that no matter what, and that's kind of what our task is on this project. That's probably most of the big topics that were brought up. I do have the letter that they gave to the neighbors, if any of y'all want to look at it, just to see it. I don't mind handing it to any of you.
And I'll go ahead and add, one of the neighbors had concerns about noise, and much like the headlights being blocked out by the building, edge noise should be significantly, if not almost all, blocked out by the building. It's going to serve as a buffer. Going back to drainage, the building will, we're going to employ roof drains throughout, so the building footprint will not really be putting any surface water on the property. It will all be piped underground. My plumbing engineer will work with Brian's team to figure out how best to route that, but it will be collected before it ever hits the surface.
And then we're happy to answer any questions you guys have.
You mentioned there's parking lot there now, currently, so it's impervious generally?
Generally, it's broken asphalt.
Broken asphalt.
Really old asphalt, gravel, random.
Is it draining actively into the culvert?
Yes.
And would you be draining any differently with obviously the improvements that you're doing?
No. Right now, that parking lot has a culvert that goes on the south side of it from Greensprings to Columbiana. It also has a branch that runs up to the north around the north side of it, which will be remaining through the whole project. We're not touching it at all.
In regards to the detention facility, could you just speak some as far as, I mean, you've talked stormwater already, but how will that work as far as concern of how quickly it will go into the drain itself? Because we know the quicker it gets there, the quicker it gets downstream, and that's kind of when a flooding issue occurs.
That, yes. So there's two, you have to, we'll have to look at it two ways. So because we are so close to the drainage channel, and like Mr. Cobb said, there is a large basin coming through us. So we'll have to look at it two ways. We'll have to run a pre-post for our site saying that our post-runoff rate is less than our pre-development runoff rate. Then we will also have to go look at the timing of the overall basin coming to us, because there's a balance. Matching rates on your own site is per the code. That's what we have to do. This one, we're going to have to go a step farther, because we can't let that time up with everything coming through us. That's the game on this one. And so we will run an overall basin model to that point. And then to probably the bridge at Columbiana, I would bet, at the crossing there where the two culverts come together. And then we will run, we will size our culvert under our pipe for those flows, and then we will time our water release to not negatively impact the water coming through us. Because what we don't want to do is our water gets speeding up, and their water gets speeding up, and then we compound. So we've got to, we've got to kind of meet off-peak. So it's a little bit of a, I can't answer your question directly, because I don't know if we're going to go before it or after it. But we're going to meet pre-post for our site and figure in the timing of the basin through it as well, if that makes sense. That's a very technical way to...
Well, that's great. I mean, I think it just needed to be stated in the setting, because obviously it's going to be a complexity of the site. The other question I had was, just in regards to this layout overall, what was given, what was a consideration given to, you know, doing this plan versus, say, keeping the site more like it is now and having a pedestrian bridge for vehicles or patrons, parking on one side, just having them walk across a pedestrian bridge?
That's a good question. It is an option that we looked at. And my reason for not wanting to do that was I did not want to put the entire parking lot exiting and entering into the neighborhood through Carr. They should have an option to go to Greensprings to limit the impact on the neighborhood. If you put them all onto Carr, they're going right or left on Carr. If they go right, they're impacting the neighborhood. If they go to Greensprings, they can go right or left. They, and they have a lot of options to not impact a very specific part of the neighborhood every time. It just disperses traffic better.
Yeah. Well, and it also helped avoid the situation where somebody pulls in from Greensprings into the edge parking lot, realizes there's no more spaces. They have to go back out on Greensprings, take a right, and come back into the Carr side. It just allows that continuous kind of cross movement without getting bottlenecked at one place or the other.
And alternatively, too, if there was the pedestrian bridge, though, you would have maybe the 41 edge shared parking spaces plus maybe 20 on the church's site.
There's currently 28 shown on the church's site, so you'd end up with about 16 trying to not impact the ditch at all. So you would end up with 55, 60 on the church side, and then 100 and...
So you would have 55 required basically to...
That's right.
Enter, exit through Greensprings. The other 100 would be required to go through Carr.
Yeah, you'd have 106 or whatever going through Carr.
So you have two cases tonight. Just kind of, not to get too far ahead of ourselves, I guess you want to vote on them one at a time. We have a resurvey first, and then the amended development plan.
That's correct.
If there are any further questions, I would entertain a motion on RS 25-12-02.
What's that?
The resurvey, yes.
Make a question that will be approved, resurvey.
Second.
Second was...
Mr. Gulas.
Okay. All right. Mr. Stamps. Yes. Yes. Mr. Gulas.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Henninger.
Yes.
Mr. Underwood. Mr. Respento.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Ms. Willcutt.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
I'm going to recuse. So that, the resurvey passes with an eight to zero vote. Now, we entertain a motion now on the amended development plan case, AD 25-12-03.
Makes a motion to approve the development plan.
Is that Ms. Willcutt? Okay.
And I guess, before, just along with that, the development plan as it currently has doesn't have any entrances or exits along Columbiana, so their discussion about not having any construction, they don't have to live the development plan anyway, because there is no access at all.
That's correct.
Not non-pedestrian, yes.
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay.
I do have a couple of questions. I didn't know how we were going to break up the two cases. Sorry about that. Chairman Roberts. So just additional question for the applicant would be, do you see, based on this plan, it looks like as drawn, there's a sidewalk on the Columbiana side. Is the applicant, it, where the sidewalk currently on Columbiana ties into the edge, it looks like that connection is going to possibly be moved and relocated?
That's correct, yes.
And could you talk a little bit about that, then? Would the new sidewalk, is the applicant planning to construct that sidewalk to connect to the adjacent community?
Yes.
Great, thanks. And then also, from that aspect, since this was such a big conversation around buffering, and I know y'all have made a promise to the neighborhood about that, could you talk a little bit about the landscape that will be used along that segment?
That's a tough one.
Can we, could we possibly go to that drawing?
Do you have a copy of that sheet? So that, that buffer along Columbiana is currently, per code, an undisturbed buffer as it sits today. We are proposing shrubs along those perimeter of the playground adjacent to the undisturbed buffer. That will be... There's, it's a combination of switchgrass, dwarf brufordholly, glossya bilia, with, I'm reading the symbols, autumn brilliance apple, service berry. Don't quote me this, I'm a civil, not a landscaper, so. But I think the intent is to, there are standards in the buffer requirements for the city of Homewood, and they have to be overgreens. So, and then like you said earlier, they'll have to be six foot tall at the end of a year, eight feet at the end of three, and 80% opacity at the end of three years.
And does, do these shrubs as proposed then meet that requirement?
I haven't, I mean, that's something that we would review more closely once they, the landscape part.
Okay. I just wanted to put emphasis on that, given the commentary this evening.
Obviously, you know, there are detention in all of those plans. You don't want to put tons of money into something that you know.
Well, I will say this, the main focus of the landscape portion of a development plan submitted is meeting the tree ordinance issues, not so much the buffer issues, other than calling them out where they're required. So we show them as a generic, what the city requirement would be, and then we show the tree calculations.
The dimension and...
That's right.
And, you know, this is where it would be, but no quite material.
And then we get way more into the tree requirements, because the tree ordinance is pretty robust and very specific. So it's more tree ordinance related on this submitted, more plant-related on the city's staff review during design, if that makes sense.
I would also point out that on the plan itself, under Note 8, it says all landscaping will meet or exceed City of Homewood landscape ordinance. So there's that commitment upfront as part of the, of the part of the plan itself to acknowledge that they will meet or exceed those requirements, so.
I guess there was one note on here I read, or I can find it right now, that all the trees would remain, they're in the buffer.
That's correct.
All the landscape you've got in here actually is on the other side.
That's correct.
Of the buffer.
Yeah.
So the buffer, trees all remain, be cleaned up, that's another story of it.
That's correct. That's correct. And then on top of that, we would add to the buffer requirements of the city.
All the plant material you have listed here really is on the other side of the buffer.
It is for the most part.
So it's going to be in excess of what's already existed there, or would be in that buffer.
It is for the most part, yes.
I just wanted to bring it up for discussion as we look at that right-of-way segment, which will include the sidewalk, which will also face the adjacent neighbors. Because as we move forward to, you know, if it does move forward, well, regardless of recommendation at council, I think the more that can be shown to the neighbors as an assurance, the better it will be, just given, you know, past precedent that were referenced earlier in the meeting.
And I think, and I think we're definitely open to that. I think the whole intent of this development team and kind of what the church is trying to do is be a good neighbor and be part of the community. I think they've, to this point, gone above and beyond to meet the neighbors and go door-to-door, and I think that'll continue through to the, if we have the opportunity to go to the city council meeting between now and then. And we'll, we're more than happy to provide additional information that we need to.
All right. If there's no further discussion, the motion by Mr. Harwell, seconded by Ms. Willcutt, to approve the amended development plan as submitted, that's what the commission will be voting on?
Yes.
All right.
Proceed with it.
Okay. Mr. Stamps. Mr. Gulas.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Henninger.
Yes.
Mr. Underwood. Mr. Respento.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Ms. Willcutt.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Again, I recuse myself on this case. Um, again, I recuse myself on this case. So, the amended development plan will go forward to city council with an eight-zero affirmative or favorable recommendation. Thank you. Okay, our last case for tonight is RS twenty-five dash twelve dash oh-four relating to nine zero five, nine zero seven and nine zero nine Frisco Street. Would the applicant please come forward and state your case?
Hello again. Uh, Matt Sims, Shoal Engineering. I'm the civil engineer on the project on behalf of Chase Fisher. Uh, the developer is attempting to convert three existing residential lots into two slightly larger residential lots. So, essentially, we are eliminating two property lines and creating one down the middle.
Okay, well, um, thank you for that. Uh, this is a public hearing. If anyone here from the public wishes to speak on this case, this will be opportunity.
Good evening. Um, I'm Shannon Tindall. I live at nine twenty Irving Road, um, which my property I own, I have a double lot. So, my second lot abuts, um, the farthest east part of this, these three parcels. I sent Mr. Goodwin an email yesterday with. Uh, with my concerns regarding, uh, this issue on the agenda. I have no issue with the three parcels being rezoned into two. My question is there are some current encumbrances on the deeds, uh, specific to development of the property? Um, and I just want to make sure that those move on to the new, uh.
Yeah, maybe.
Legals and, okay.
Yes, this resurvey will be recorded. And on the resurvey, at the bottom in the notes, it has, it, it references.
The two-thirds.
It references.
The square footage. Okay.
That, um, were recorded and that are the covenants and the restrictions of the.
Okay. Not that there are encumbrances, not just the covenants. There are specific encumbrances. Okay.
Yes, there are several, yes.
Specific encumbrances regarding forest, forest.
Documents will be referenced in, in these documents.
And will not be overridden? And will not be overridden in any way?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great.
They'll, they'll be recorded with the plat.
With it, okay, great.
It runs with the land as you noted.
Right, okay. Just making sure that that is gonna be the case.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and then, secondly, I don't know if any plans or specs have been, um.
No.
Submitted on these parcels, okay?
Not. This deals only with the land at this point.
Okay, just the parcel IDs. Um, and then, Mr. Stamps, um, has, there been any zoning changes regarding ingress and egress for emergency vehicles? Um, since we last had, um, Frisco Street come upon us?
Yeah, I think that was earlier in the spring.
Well, it was, no, it was like, ooh, two years ago maybe?
It first came up a couple of years ago and then we had, I think it was in twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-two or twenty-three.
And then, um, again, this past May is when we had a bunch of conversations again about the, um, with Mr. Fisher.
Oh, but it was not public at that point?
No, 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 these were just internal meetings.
Okay. And what, what was the?
And so, um, the, the houses will have to have sprinkler systems in them.
Right.
Um, and, um, you know, that meet certain specifications. The, um, and that is, and they receive the labor from the, um, fire chief to allow that the houses be sprinkled, sprinklers? And that they wouldn't, um, have to, um, have.
Have the ability for emergency vehicles to access the properties?
And they wouldn't have to have to have a trunk.
Leave it in its current state, twelve thirty-one. But the way.
Right.
We can't get some of the larger trucks.
You can't get any, it's, it's barely bigger than a alley.
And we would require a sprinkler system to that way. It's sufficient time to.
Okay.
Get support vehicles.
But since we weren't, um, the public was not aware of those issues that came forward? Are we going to be notified when planning, plans and specs come in so that we can make sure that, um, you know, the park has, there's no parking on the, there is no street really? Um, I mean, I guess he's gonna pay to extend the glorified alley that is Frisco Street. Um, and, sorry. And then, uh, I just, there's, I, I, um, there's a lot of concern going forward. I just need to make sure that we're gonna be, um, notified if and when these properties have plans presented for development.
Typically not.
That's not something that.
Okay, so then, I, let's, okay, well, then we need to talk about some serious concerns. Because I'm, um, I am really not sure how the safety issue was overridden, um.
And ma'am, and ma'am, we're, I'm sorry.
There are not existing homes where they're, and where this is talking about, there are not existing homes. There are two, maybe three. Right, but this is going past that. This is just empty, well, it's dirt now because he cleared it out. Huh? Right, you're taking it from three to two.
Yeah, the issue before the commission tonight deals only with the land itself.
And that's it.
And whether to subdivide it from three to two. That's the issue for the commission.
Can I get with you on how we can be updated on if and when plans are ever, like, does it, does it?
Yeah, you know, with, with, when and if building permits come through, then we'll have, we'll have your, your name. And we'll, we can reach out to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let me put my name down.
But to clarify too, that'll be notification of the plans being received for administrative approval. There won't be another board approval.
That, yeah, that, that's right. Yeah, that, you're right.
But who's gonna make sure that the deed, like, do y'all look at the encumbrances on the deed?
That, that's right. When it comes through for a building permit, it will be reviewed with, with the knowledge that those have limitations on whatever's proposed to be built. So, we'll have to make sure that the developers adhere into those limitations.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Emily Spangler, nine one eight Irving. I live bordering a small amount of the edge of the property. I think some of the questions that Ms. Tindall raised about sort of whether the encumbrances on the deed restrictions would continue are of concern? As well as, uh, lack of clarity about if there were any changes in the maximal buildable area on the lots when they're re-computed. Uh, additionally, there was some concern on my part that this might be a means of skirting some of the tree ordinances. In particular, we've had some elements of bad faith with this developer in prior years where he removed trees without approval on the lots. And there's concern on my part that some of the lot reassessment may be a mean of further avoiding the intent of, of the tree line preservation and support in the neighborhoods.
Well, yeah.
Okay, anyone else, uh, like to speak on this case? All right, seeing no one, um, we'll close the public portion. And, uh, Mr. Sims, if you could come forward and answer any questions. And again, to the extent you want to address anything that's been raised by the members of the public who've spoken, uh, this would be a good opportunity.
Sure. Uh, in regards to, um, like, like Mr. Goodwin mentioned, this is simply to essentially draw a new property line to deal with the land. And the deed restrictions, um, as mentioned, discussed with Ms. Williams are going to be recorded as part of the plat? And are going to follow with any kind of building permits and development of the property itself. Any other questions?
Okay, if there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion, uh, on.
No, Mr. Harwell.
Mr. Underwood, Mr. Gulas.
I can't, thank you. Okay. Mr. Stamps. Mr. Gulas.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
No.
Mr. Henninger.
Yes.
Mr. Underwood. Mr. Respento.
Yes.
Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so your resurvey is approved, uh, by an eight to one vote. Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank y'all.
Okay, moving on, um, your package should have had, uh, a proposed calendar for, um, twenty twenty-six? Both in terms of application review deadline, application deadline and planning commission meetings. Again, our meeting is typically, well, it's always scheduled for the first Tuesday, Tuesday of the month. And, um. Fred, as, as we come up, I mean, I'm looking at the schedule, the, the schedule now, to me, I don't see, sometimes it runs up. The meeting will be the day before or after July fourth or Labor Day or holidays. I don't really see that here. But, um, if anyone has any concerns about the, the schedule, um, let us know. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
We'll push the seventh, July fourteenth. We always end up pushing.
Yeah, so the, the fourth, yeah, the fourth would be a Friday, be the, you know, it'd be the week. I would be, I would be fine with that. Is that something we need to do now, Fred? Or is that something we could address kind of?
To, to, I'm sorry, go ahead. July fourth is the concern and what is, that's on a Friday, is that?
So, it'd be, I think July is, July fourth would be Thursday, Thursday before, oh, Friday before, Friday before, yeah.
Everybody, everybody travels all the way around that week.
So, the, the feeling is that you, some members may be out of town on July the eighth? And you'd want to reschedule that to the, the following, the fifteenth, fifteenth, is what?
The seventh would be. The seventh, the fourteenth. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, all, uh, from time to time, it's necessary because the Christmas parade, things like that will come up and we have to adjust that. This is primarily, we, we will put this on the city's website so that applicants will know generally what that is. That's, that's the intent, but there's certain flexibility in, but we can go forward at this point if the commission's agreeable to change that to the fourteenth. If there's any problem, we'll, we'll go forward and change that.
We can always change other dates.
Yeah.
As we, as we go, yeah.
We're flexible, we just need to give applicants an idea, you know, so they'll know. But we can, we can also work with the applicants to, if there's some slight timing issue, so, yeah.
With the fourteenth, I'm gonna put forward a motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, so that passes. All right, any communications before this, from the staff rather, before we adjourn?
Yes, one, one, you, you were sent an email, but just as a reminder, this Saturday, December the sixth, between nine and twelve? There'll be, um, representatives from University of North Alabama will be conducting a, um, sort of a workshop session to, for both the planning commissioners and the boarders on the adjustment? To discuss the roles and responsibilities and duties of those two bodies. So, um, hopefully, it'll work out. Uh, I think Emily's been handling that, but I think y'all hopefully have made a commitment and, and are coming in. And hopefully, they'll work out that you contend. That will be, uh, in the city council workroom, uh, between nine and twelve, this Saturday the sixth. So, just encouraging those members to come if you can. I, I think it'll be educational and informative, so.
And I took the training online a couple of weeks ago, some of the similar training is very informative. And I think everyone would benefit from it. I know time's an issue, but, uh, good stuff there.
Yeah, we, we haven't done it in a while and I think it's, especially with kind of a new board, new composition of the commission.
Mr. Kendrick conducted some a little while back.
Yeah.
The University of North Alabama does a great job. They, they handle all the, the CAPSO certifications, uh, the Certified Alabama Planning and Zoning Official certifications. And, um, they do, they're very knowledgeable and they get really good speakers who are tough and they explain it to you.
It's good.
Well, it'll finish before the championship games all start, so.
Yeah, it's early.
As they start.
And, and lastly, staff would also echo the sentiments of the chair at the beginning of the meeting to welcome, uh, the new members to the commission. We look forward to working with you.
And also welcome Amy, our, uh, sitting in her.
Well, that's right. She, she was at the BZA meeting, I'm sorry. This is our first planning commission meeting, I'm sorry. Yes, she's a city engineer. So, we, she'll be joining us, I, I guess, on a regular basis. All right, all right, okay.
Okay, with that, I'll, I'll adjourn the meeting.